I know.
He's here.
Okay, we're live.
Six, sir.
Let's do it. All right, thank you. You in a hurry?
Yeah, I have to work overtime tonight.
Yeah.
You can do it on.
You guys. Had an opportunity to look at the November 10.
Yes.
Looking for motion.
Motion.
Second. All favors, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? We're good. Claims, Nita, anything we need to know about that might be unusual or different or something?
Well, we paid two months for our, uh, part of our paving, so that was a hundred and six thousand dollars. And I think we still owe. That's over half of them.
It's over half of them, okay, that's on budget though, right?
That was through our community crossing grant, yes.
Okay, okay, cool.
Uh, Brian, luck engineering, lucky on our A D and A.
Yeah.
A D and A title on a handicap. Thanks, we paid him twelve hundred on the engineer.
And he's staying on budget as well, right?
Right.
Okay, cool.
He went over, way over on the. The crossing or the community crossing grant, it was like twenty-eight thousand, but he stayed at twenty-two thousand, like he promised.
Okay.
He also on that one, but he's done good for us, I think.
Okay, good deal.
Taking care of it.
Good deal, good deal.
So we had quarterly tank maintenance, which is two thousand fifty-six dollars, same same all year.
We should expect that to go up.
It goes up just a little each year.
Does it? Okay.
That's all.
Any questions, you two, on anything on the claims? Looking for a motion.
Motion.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Or business now building? So exactly what do we need to determine this evening? I know here's the two appraisals, one's for forty. Two, one forty-eight, right?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. What do we need to exactly decide? Are we gonna set a selling price and then advertise it as such, or exactly what are we doing?
My doctor, Lori Neal stepped today and she said she would go ahead and be Wellington, market at ours to decide on what price you want to set. She's gonna advertise to that. And so we'll give her first word of judgment and start.
That's Lori, right? And she's the one at thirty-eight thousand, right?
Yes.
So should we consider some sort of incentive? For some people versus others? I guess that's my only question before we set a price. Like if they're gonna put a business in. Should we, uh, like this says thirty-eight thousand, say, let me start on, all right? Should we consider, uh, somebody who's gonna put a business in there, say thirty-five thousand versus somebody who's not, say thirty-eight thousand? Or is that even okay for us to do that? Because I would love to get business, that's what I would like to do. What do you guys think?
You can get that, but you can't, like, once they buy it, you can't. Could you hold them to that?
Why couldn't we? Because she's gonna advertise it as such, right?
Yeah, you could make a restrictive covenant, you know, and you could say, you could, you can be creative on those, you could say, um, first floor must be used for a business. At a court with for a period, you know, ten years or something like that.
Yeah.
And you could do that and not, not make a restriction on the upper floors. Somebody could, you know, have a business that lived upstairs or, um, what kind of business are you wanting? Are you, are there any businesses that you don't want?
Chicken House would be the only thing we would want, but, uh, I'm just being.
Chicken House Restaurant would be.
Well, that'd be, I, I don't know that I wanna define it as such, you know.
Yeah.
I'd just like to encourage.
I don't, you might wanna talk to Lori about that and see what she thinks, if, if, see if she's done that before, but yeah, you can put restrictive covenants on things like that.
That's just my opinion, what do you two think?
It'd be nice to get something business in there.
I think we need to check Lori.
Okay.
Restrictions there in house, I need to do that.
Yeah, she'd have some.
We're gonna put restrictions on it, then we need to know what we want.
Yeah, you know, it'd be hard to put a restaurant in there properly because of those strict requirements that they have now with the. The, you have a grill or something, they want you to put in a.
Fire suppression system.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, all right, so.
Those are very expensive. So, and unless there's been one in there before, or there is one, I don't think there is, is there?
But I'd also take advice from Lori as well, you know, is that, would that even help us something? Is that feasible, I get them, I guess that's my thoughts.
It, it might, it might be good for her to, if she markets it, to put that it is adjacent to the Monon Trail. And probably circle back with, um, oh. Yeah, and find out where they're coming, how they're coming along with that grant, if that's in place yet, and, um, let them know that that grant is available as. For a potential down payment on, on a property that someone wants to purchase along the trail. And, but she could put some things in there like, you know, realtors would be ideal for a bike repair shop, a sandwich shop, um, I don't know. Help me out here.
Bed and breakfast, huh? Bed and breakfast?
Yeah, that's true too, yeah. And what, what kind of businesses do we need in Kansasburg?
Any at all?
Well, I'll tell you when, when my husband was still alive, when we had that little bait and tackle shop. There in Turkey, check station, I mean, we didn't get rich, I'm not saying that, but you had something a little bit bigger than what we had. Uh, because we were busy.
Yeah, and sometimes I think about on the square, I think, gosh, I wish we had this, or I wish we had that, like, I wish we had a little sundry shop. A little store you could go to to get a magazine, a sandwich, a soft drink, you know, um, bag of chips. I'm telling you all my bad habits.
You know, something like that, just to run into and pay up for these things.
Not necessarily wanna make direct competition, you know, like with K and E or anything else. It could just be nice to have something, you know, encourage something.
Mm-hmm.
I guess is what I'm thinking.
Need to talk to Lori.
Yeah, but I can still say, you know, the, the, I, I say let's do the thirty-eight thousand for her, if she recommends we can do it, incentive, then we do it. How about that? I'll, I'll, uh. Make that motion. Okay?
Yeah.
But if there's no reason to do it, say if she doesn't recommend that, then we, we just keep it at the thirty-eight thousand. What do you guys think? That'd be the continue.
Yeah.
Okay?
We're making a motion.
Yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. That's what I said. I know, and I, I think that's an okay point.
And your word as well.
No, it's not, it's just an idea, that's all it is, I'd like to see something.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, what, I mean, all things are considered, you know, I, I don't know, I don't know. Whatever they may think they do. Okay, anything else we need to do for the lodge building? Okay, all right, the next thing is, uh, let's, uh, painting the center line at Sycamore Street. I know Tom brought this up, thought it'd be a good idea. Uh, do we wanna act upon it? We got two bids, what, eight hundred and twelve hundred, wasn't it, or something, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Eight hundred and fourteen.
Yeah, eight and fourteen, that, that's if you wanted the double coated.
Right, double coated, that's right. So what do you guys think? Do we need this, do we not need this?
Yeah, right here.
You think we?
I just don't see that it's necessary. I mean, have there been like a lot of accidents, or just like head-on collisions?
Clear message.
You know, I mean, I, I drive down the middle of the street, but when I see somebody come.
That's the one you met, right? Again.
Yeah, I'll scooch up.
Yeah.
But I just think that's kind of the habit of small towns and country roads, that you just drive middle and you scooch.
But that bid was from the highway to the.
Crossway stop.
Yeah.
And then other roads, I would have to get back in contact with them, because we may just have to see how it plays out, because this paint may not work until warm weather.
And sure won't, sure won't.
So it, but it may be all the way up till springtime.
I guess the only time that I can see it tough on this is when we have a lot of traffic, like during the festival. That's the only time that I see that there's merit. Regular business, no, but during the festival, I see. You know, people around the park, whatever, and traffic gets a little. Disgruntled, and that's what I do, I don't know.
Yeah, you're right.
But I, I. Where can we take this eight hundred dollars from, if we decide to do it?
Local level of the street.
Okay, so we have the money, right? And I'm sure it's gonna take maintenance every three or four years, we're gonna have to redo it, right, if we choose to do it?
If I choose to.
What's your thoughts?
Uh, it, it's gonna be a maintenance thing, so it's gonna be every couple of years, we're gonna have to, then the eight hundreds of thousands, you know, to try. Should always wanna go up. Um. I don't see that being called for, but it, it's up to you all. I'm kinda like her, I drive down the little road too.
Yeah, that's what you mean, and we've never practiced. To learn to drive. It just seems like if you're gonna do it from the highway to there, then you would need it just equally as much on Oak, because of all the Hellsville's traffic.
No, I might don't want to do it down there.
They just, they get the whole. Yeah.
Let's let the process figure it out, uh, who, I, I need a motion on the, on the center line to spend the eight hundred dollars, or make the motion to spend whatever you want to spend. Because I know you said you was for it, are you willing to make the motion? Eight hundred dollars, I guess that's really the.
I wanna think about this a little bit more.
Okay, okay.
I wanna show this one.
Okay.
Tell them next week.
You okay with that?
He's gonna be keeping an eye on how I drive.
Yeah, I know.
I'll call Joe.
I'll be more careful.
Okay, all right, let's get some more feedback before we make a decision, all right? Sound like a plan? Okay, council meeting schedule, I saw that.
Yeah, I have a good calendar.
All right, is it in our packet?
Yeah, there's your.
Yeah, that's good.
Good job.
So September's the only Tuesday, we didn't have any other holidays that messed it up, huh?
No, April, July, month, February. So I don't know about the Monday, but.
Yeah.
It should be over the fourth of May.
Yeah, I would think so. I think it looks good, you guys got any issues with it? Okay, go, just lock her in. All right, thank you. Okay, uh, Lisa.
Um, do you really have anything to report, other than to just remind everyone, there's gonna be another open house at the Wilkins House across the way here Wednesday? I think it's from one to three or.
Wednesday, this week?
Yeah, this week, it's the second. Two, four, okay.
You have one too.
I do, and I wanted to invite everybody here to come up there.
I was going.
Uh, thank you, thank you, I'm so glad, I'd love to see everybody, please. It's, um, it's an annual open, is it, how about an annual open house that Historic Landmarks of Indiana is hosting, and I'm having it at my building. Uh, because of the renovations I've done, and I've worked closely with landmarks over, well, probably five plus years on it. Um, they're having four throughout the state, and mine is the one in the southern part of the state. So there's, uh, gonna be, um, nice refreshments and just time to mingle, it's just, it's from five to seven, you just show up when you wanna come, drop in and stay as long as you want. And I have stuffed mushrooms and, and cheese trays and fruit trays, and little sandwiches and.
I'm having surgery.
Oh, you are?
So I can, so.
Okay.
You're sending some money.
I can, yeah, sure I can.
You say five to seven?
Five to seven, and then we're gonna give some sneak peek tours of the upstairs, not everybody's been to the upstairs, it's got two floors above it, and there's a, on the third floor, that's where the odd fellows used to have their meetings. And it's kinda like a big hall, and of course, right now, there's a big hole in the middle of the floor, but I'm sure you all will overlook that until we get it fixed, but. Yeah, I just wanna make everyone feel welcome, I'd love to see you all, each and every one of you there, if you can make time to come and, and drop in, so.
What about the one over here?
Huh?
The one here?
Well, I'm, uh, yeah, I'll come to that one too, that's.
That one's also Wednesday.
It is, they're both the same time, uh, that one's before mine, and it's, it's to give people a chance, they're coming down from Indy and other parts around the southern part of the state. To tour that and see that before they come up to my building. And my building is a work in progress, it's not done yet, it's done on the outside, pretty much, but it's not done on the inside, and it won't be for a while. But I would love for you all to see it, it has some very unique features to it, so, so thank you for that.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, I, I can't think of any other, any business. Thank you.
All right, Aaron?
Uh, kind of business is normal around here, uh, I did get Joe's speech, let him post it, he just hasn't got to put the signs up yet. Uh, we had to dig up a part of our new road out on East Oak, but we had to re-plant, we got prepared, so then we moved it. That turned into a little deal, but that, that deal. A lot of pipe running, and so on whether to go to the other one. Uh, they're back. That's it.
Is our snow removal equipment up to snuff?
Yeah, it was, when we did.
All right, you checked it then.
Yes.
We just got it all looped up already. Good deal, well did. Ask us.
Yeah.
Ask Aaron a question on the phone.
This'll how difficult it is.
It's not.
Okay.
Uh, here, working in the closet, and it's ice cold, uh, coolies coming out, and they're gonna have to come back.
Yeah.
So you wanna say what's wrong?
They don't have enough breakers in the breaker box.
It would never hurt that.
They got order more breakers to go in the breaker box, because they don't have enough spots, there's too many reception holes, and too much. Going on, so they gotta order these special breakers to put in there.
Do we need a bigger box?
Well, that, that's not really the box that you get, I mean, we can get a bigger box, but. I think, I think they gotta figure out, they got these special breakers they can order to put in there, that's like, you, uh, one breaker, and then it'll take. Place it two. They've got two spots on them, except just four, so they're gonna order four or five, and they have to put in there.
Should we crack that door open to let some heat?
But he did work it in there right there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but he did work it in there right there.
See anything else here?
Nope.
There's nothing here to, right? Parking wreck. Nothing. It is weird, I miss it. Okay, needed what have you got, I see transfer funds, other stuff?
I just, uh.
Cover that.
I need to like, bring up, four more transfers, within my first one, we covered our engineering cost, uh, and change one. We had, I had extra trees, and just put for it, and it's, uh. Fourteen hours of training. And then, small amounts of concrete, and water, so they might work on that. Or, well, we have, like, the water, so, so, transfer.
I need a motion on these transfers.
Motion.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? What else do you have? Okay, we have any water leakage? Okay, AJ, what do you got? Anything?
Gold.
Gold? Anything? I don't have anything either. Let's go to the public. Start over here with this young lady. Nothing?
Like a celebrity. Maria? Oh, yes.
I do like that dude.
She reminded.
No, Maria and Matt, and her band, the Little Mountain Band, was here Friday night. And they booked the community building the last Friday of each month, all through the next twenty twenty-six.
Right.
So they're hoping, you know, to get lots of people to come.
Okay.
And I think that some people can come, have a good time, that's seven dollars. Uh, yeah, and it's from seven to nine, uh, of an evening, so I'm just.
The last Friday night of the month?
Yes. So I wanna see you here.
They have some work to build up, but, but, that's what I.
The Little, Little Mountain Band, they play every year at the fair, and a lot of different places that they play, they're really good.
Next.
I'm just gonna ask them, is that heater in there that's having an issue? Is there anything wrong with it, or is it just because of the way all the houses are lined up?
Yeah, it's just, it's one of the needs.
Oh, don't have that, it's a warranty.
You all, yeah, no, you all need to make sure you don't put stuff in front of it, I'd say they clear there, because they have it in front of it, because it was not set in front of it. So you need, you all need to make sure that you don't set that in back in front of it. And I, I recommend that you take all your food in there, that you got, and put a bit of tote. Keep the mice out of there, otherwise you're gonna have the mice from. Or two crackers, you're gonna get some potatoes, and some stuff like that, yeah, that's just, I just put it in there.
Okay.
Good idea.
Yeah, no.
What else, sir?
Uh, two things, one is the center line.
Yeah.
My comment on that is that it was my thoughts, as I was walking one day, and after I said that to the meeting, and I walked up the next day, and I, and I looked at it, and I walked down the middle of the road, and I walked out. Well, maybe white line isn't what's needed here, but anyway, it was just a thought that came to me, and I guess I was basically wanting to know if anybody else had thought possible the same thing. Because I knew, like Jennifer said, people ride down the same road, and that's okay, it's understandable in your country, but I know with that area being what it is, it's wired, and it just. I just thought it might create some, granted, and thank you that nobody has ever had a wreck there, so I thought the blessing there itself.
Makes us look like we're up town. I would like to add to that, Tom, I, when you come, at the night, when you come in, I think it'd be nice if that white line was just a little way into town, the driveway. I mean, when you're coming, turning in.
Oh.
Because I think it's up here.
Oh.
Because I think it's hard to see, you know, when it's raining, and off the highway there, I think it's, I think white line would hurt.
Well, I know, my witness is that I know when I'm there, myself turning, a lot of people tend to make the big, a wide turn.
Yeah.
And I just know maybe the line itself would help that, so just a suggestion, it's something that, you know, rear witness line.
I think sixty just up to the stop sign. You know, just to give them the idea.
Well, we appreciate any and all input, and that's why, you know, we're taking our time, and I think we're going about it correctly, so that's.
I agree, that's what I'm, I'm thinking about, yeah, that's what I'm going on. Second thing is, and, and I don't want to. Stir up anything with this comment, is, is, does anybody know the status on the rail pressures in that area there? I know they've been, I know they've been closed for a long time. It rolled for one time when I was walking, but there was no water in there, and I just heard, but I don't know. I was, I was curious, because it seemed like a long time, it's been shut down or not, it's been occupied, and nobody's been there doing anything, so I didn't know if something.
Do you know the status there?
They're not approved by the state car marshal yet.
It's not?
No, it's not been approved by the state car marshal. Uh, they still got, they still got a bunch of changes, they're gonna have to end up cutting concrete, and put the new number two line into it, and they got, they got a lot of changes.
So is their engineering off?
Yes, and it's all to deal with their, what they call their, their splash. Thing there, if they call it a shower, they get away with it, but they never put no drainage to it, it can't just run off in the grass.
I'm worried about that.
Yeah, so, um, I don't, I think Peak has even got roped up for, because they already had theirs open. I don't think any of the restrooms are even open yet, because they're not.
Okay.
The, in, in any town, because I think they've been approved by the state car marshal lifetime, I hope.
Walter, Nina, why don't you reach out to Jeff and see if he can give us just the stats? Just a purge stat, so we can record, right? Okay? Yeah, thanks.
Here, here, I wanna follow up one thing, Sam. Uh, do you know what the status is gonna be when that thing is approved, as far as being open, is it gonna be open twenty-four seven? Or is it gonna be open at certain hours? I was approached.
Uh-huh.
By somebody, that they were somebody, I said they, I don't know who it is, I guess it's, was gonna pay somebody to open and close that place, so it's not open twenty-four seven.
The restrooms?
Those will have automatic lock, ain't it?
I, I heard that it was supposed to have automatic locking, open, open.
Certain times though, right?
Yes, it'd be like eight morning till eight in the evening.
Yeah, something like that, that's what I heard too.
Not, not, not full-time open.
I thought down to this, just one place.
Is that, you, you may be correct, you may be correct, but, yeah.
Well, I didn't know, because somebody approached me about it, and I didn't know anything about it, you know, and maybe not that I was wanting to do that, it just, it. I don't know.
And then you reach out, that's a good side question.
No, man.
Okay. We'll get back to answer, okay? Fair enough? Anything else? Sir?
No, I got nothing.
You got nothing, I got nothing. Kicker, you wanna jump in the party?
No, I'll just tell everybody happy holidays.
Okay.
And just for your information, Bill and Anita, Peter.
Yes, they did a fine job.
Uh?
They did a fine job today.
Yes, they put the Christmas lights up, that they were around.
I saw that, I was happy.
Okay. Well, uh, I know we said we was gonna meet a little while for the. Committee, right? But did we ever talk to Joe before? Don't we have some things for Joe from the committee?
Owen, Owen, for unsafe building committee.
No? I got that wrong? I thought we had some task for him.
We talked about how we might have even talked to one person.
That was it?
Yeah. I don't think there's any action, uh, the last thing I know, uh, I think Anita, I'm gonna work on getting a summary to put together, uh, work that's been done in the last several years. As a result of the unsafe building committee, I, I have pictures, some before and after pictures would probably be interesting.
Yeah.
Put in some of the stories.
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good to, but I just, what I was gonna say is, I, I'm gonna reach out to Joe and make sure he's here at the next meeting, but I think we need to, you know, make some hard firm plans on what's next, starting in January.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to do, have, like, we need to have some success before spring, but kinda set some goals and that kind of stuff.
Do you wanna ask the, the, I'd say, building committee members to do a drive-through and make a?
That's what I think we probably oughta do together, maybe set a different.
I mean, ahead.
And just do a. Yeah. A quick drive.
Okay.
You know, and I really think that's what we need to do in the next, even month or two. You know what I mean? And make some firm plans. Yeah, 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 yes, sir, Tom.
I just wanna add something, and it's just something that's, you all know, I know Joe's been, uh, he did this once for me, because a dog got after me once, he never did have any interaction with that, but I had an issue again when I was walking. interaction with that, but I had an issue again when I was walking the trail, that two dogs, Murray Rice House, I don't know who it is, but Murray Rice House along the trail, along the, the trail going towards, uh, West Washington School Road, there were two dogs that came out, no collars on them, but, uh, I forgot my spray, or I would've used it, if they were really vicious, and I had to pick up a stick, I didn't hit them, but they did finally turn.
Well, let's make sure Joe gets that word.
And then this morning, down Murray Road, not very far from here, four, there's ten uh, trailers there, trailers, that dog, the boxer, it's come out after me before, but this morning, it got really close, and hit its mouth, and it was, it was growling, and it was.
It's got scots?
Yeah, I don't know who it is, but anyway, I hit it with my fist, and it took off, and all he said was sorry, he was in the door.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, I didn't have my spray, it was too strong, but they ran us.
That's your fault. You know you're supposed to keep that with you.
I know.
But we need to make sure Joe is aware of this.
Well, that's what I'm letting, you know, just sort of, you know, I was, no damage to me, I just didn't want, I, just so you know. Yeah, I did it time.
Okay, anybody up here got anything else before we close the meeting?
Yeah, we made a substantial savings on Joe's car.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, thirty-six dollars.
Oh, that's real good. Yeah.
That's real good. He went where I said.
Oh, did he? Yeah.
Yeah, from two thousand and thirty-six dollars, that's a good savings.
Maybe, or maybe.
Sometimes as a, I've got my own organization, like the town, we kinda get over.
Engaged.
Yeah.